I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Texas Southmost College District. Trustees present Ms. Delia Sines, Dr. Norma Lopez Harris, Mr. Edward Camarillo, Mr. Edgar Garcia is on the way, myself. Absent are Dr. Zabaleta and Ms. Al- Aldrethe. Also present is our President, Dr. Jesús Roberto Rodriguez. And I'm gonna call on Delia Sines to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, one and indivisible.
Comments? My report, Chairwoman's report. I guess most of us were at the Gaila last Saturday, and it was a great event. But I'm gonna say something. No one, no one had more fun than Dr. Lopez Harris and her entire family. It was an amazing event with lots of people that supported us. We didn't raise the 150 that we wanted to, so I guess we keep on working for the rest of the year to see if we can accomplish that. However, we did raise 135,000. Now, let's note that every dollar goes to a student, so we're happy to be able to add that to our scholarship fund. And we're looking forward to the 100th. When I came in and set up my table, the DA, Mr. Sines was sitting there, and he goes, "Adela, you would think that we're not in Brownsville." Because for the past four years, the Gaila Committee has tried to up the last year, and I think we accomplished that this year. So I am looking forward to the 100th, which would be next year. And I hope you all are looking forward to the 100th as well, because God willing, and He gives us health, is we're gonna, we're gonna be there. I also attended the Saturday before, the Conjunto Festival. And I have, because it actually, the second year started here at the college, but this year, it was different. Carlo Hernandez is in charge, one of the people in charge, and they work really hard. They're a real small committee. And I've noticed that they do it all for free, of course, right? And they try to raise, and TSE tries to help in every way we can, because these are our kids. And we hope that when they, when they see the college, and we do a good job of recruiting, maybe we'll pick up some kids. I was given the opportunity this time to recruit, and I took it seriously. Because I had a captive audience, right? So I talked about, I talked to the students, and I said, "This is your home, feel at home." And then I talked to the parents. How many of you have already sent your kids to school and are looking for something to do? So when I went out to the bathroom, there was a line of people waiting to talk to me. And of course, I gave them information, I gave them Claudia's number, because she takes care of everything. And it was, it was really, really amazing. Now Carlo came in and asked me to take care of this gentleman that is with Texas Folklife. Pardon my ignorance, I didn't know what it was. I saw the gentleman, and he was nice, and I came, and I was nice to him, and came sit down with him. Dr. Harris and I sit there, and all of a sudden, we see, there's a lot of people coming to take pictures with him. And we say, "We should take pictures with him, too." Well, it turned out to be the appointee by the Governor to Texas Folklife, and his name is Sunny Sauceda. I've been doing this for 16 years, and I don't lose an opportunity to bring something to TSE. So I start talking to this guy, and he's talking about the Big Squeeze. And I think, "What is that?" I have no idea what the Big Squeeze is. Well, it's the semifinals of Conjunto. So then, I say, "Well, maybe it's a good thing that we bring it to TSE, because I wanna bring everything to TSE here." So, long story short, he goes home, and I go home, and that night, he texted me, says, "Would you like to be my guest at the Big Squeeze, Saturday, the 26th?" And I'm excited. I can say, "As my special guest, I'm excited. I'm gonna be there." And then I look at the calendar, it's our Mariachi Fest, and I belong here. But in that interim, we've been texting just about every night. I think, I really believe that it will happen, it will come to TSE, not only the Big Squeeze, but the big Conjunto organization will come here. So, super, 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 super excited for that. And I wanna say that, back in childhood days, I knew Commissioner Tino Villarreal, but I don't think he liked me too much, and neither did I. But anyway, we see each other, and he says, "You don't like me?" And I said, "Not really." And I said, and he says, "Why?" I said, "Because, because you're not friendly. You're not friendly to the college, you're not friendly to me." And he says, "Well, let's change that." I said, "Okay." So we talked, and we changed that, that moment. So I'm telling him, because again, I don't lose an opportunity to talk about TSE. And I said, "When are you coming to tour the college, if you really care for it?" And he said, "Like, whenever you tell me." We came and toured this part, and the President, as always, did a great job of promoting TSE. And, but he had a meeting, and he couldn't tour ITech. So he says, "But I'm coming back Thursday." So we set it up for today. This morning, he came, and he took maybe about three hours, and he was blown away by what we had. Thank you, Mr. Mesquias, and Ricardo. Ricardo is really awesome. And you did a great job, Mr. Mesquias, too. Thank you. He was blown away, he was excited, he, I mean, we are. And then he holds my hand, and he says, "We're gonna walk this hand-in-hand, CD and TSE." So I'm super excited, I'm super, super excited, excited about that. So it went very well. I think the future is bright for TSE, if we keep bringing friends on board. I'm excited. There's one person that I wanna talk about today, because it's really nice when people recognize what we do. And we take this person for granted all the time, and she does it all, she does it all. You know, midnight, two o'clock in the morning, she's always there to answer my texts. And I'm thinking, I know she's asleep, but if I don't do it right now, I'll forget. And that's Ms. Claudia Hernandez. There is nothing she cannot do for you, at least for the Board, and for our constituents. Because if I get a complaint, I just give it to her, and she'll find a resolution, or we call and say, "It can't be done." So thank you, Claudia, for all you do, and you don't go unnoticed. Thank you. And that concludes my exciting report. With that, I'm gonna pass it on to my President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, trustees. I don't think mine is that exciting, but you know, I gotta tell you, we're doing great things, and as I like to say, the sun always shines on TSE. And I'd like to begin my report with the statewide recognition we received from the Texas Success Center earlier this month. We have long known that TSE provides our students with high-quality education, and our most recent affirmation of this was earning the Texas Pathways' recognition of Scaling Excellence, or the ROSE Award, which is part of the talent-strong Texas Pathways. And congratulations to our Instructional and Student Services team for their ongoing collaborations to ensure students are achieving program learning outcomes, and are enabled to transfer this knowledge for success, whether continuing their education or entering the workforce. So thank you to Vanessa Vasquez, Judy Moreno, Oscar Hernandez, and Dr. Chris Alves for providing leadership for these initiatives, and continuing to showcase the great work that TSE does at the state level. I also have some more good news to share regarding the Raúl J. Guerra Early Childhood Center. It is worth mentioning that we are the only early childhood center in South Texas that holds the prestigious accreditation from the National Association for the Education of Young Children. In addition, we are regularly getting inspected by the Texas Department of Health and Human Services. And I'm pleased to announce that we passed our most recent inspection with flying colors. The Health and Human Services conducted an unannounced monitoring inspection on March 13, during which we received zero findings. So congratulations to Ms. Maricela Navas and her team for their dedication to the little scorpions and to their families. So it's a reflection that we're always on point doing our job, so thank you for that. And this month, we hosted two excellent events led by our criminal justice programs. First, our U.S. District Judge Fernando Rodríguez was featured in the Scorpion Speaker Series during his presentation, "The Role and Impact of the Legal System in Our Society." He shared real-world examples of how the law impacts us all on a personal level. He also provided inspirational advice to our students as they prepare for career and legal injustice fields. Next, we had the State District Judge Juan A. Magallanes held a hearing in the Ruben Narrera Legal Center. Students were able to observe an actual motion to suppress hearing to enrich their understanding of court hearings. This was the vision a former trustee Ruben Narrera had when he advocated for the Legal Center. So thank you to the TSE's trustees and the scorpion community for honoring this memory through this activity. Now, we also hosted our Second Annual CT Signing Day on April 10. This year, we welcomed so many high schools. It was phenomenal, and continues to grow, from the Brownsville ISD to the San Benito School Districts, the Harlington High School, Idea Frontier, Ideon Riverview, Idea San Benito, Jubilee, Port Isabel High School, Triumph High School, San Benito High School, South Texas ISD Medical Professions, Edinburgh High School, and we even had a student from San Antonio High School. Now, during the event, they affirmed their commitment to continue their education through workforce training and healthcare programs. So thank you to our team in Student Services, Workforce Training, Health Professions, for your collaboration in welcoming these students to the TSE family. And I would like to especially thank Vanessa and Judy Moreno for their leadership in coordinating this event, as well as Chair Garza and Secretary Lopez Harris for helping us to celebrate our students, which is really important to see our trustees there and embracing them, and just puts a stamp of approval for the work we do.
It was, it was an amazing, amazing event, you know. The athletes have their signing day, the academics have their signing day, but we didn't have anything for workforce or vocational. And you can see the pride, the pride in those students. It was amazing.
And now with Mr. Vella probably gonna give us more money as we move forward. I wonder, this program's gonna get better and better. No pressure, sir. No pressure. It's a setup for the... Now, we also partnered with Brownsville Independent School District in the Building Financial Capacity Coalition on another event this month. The Congressional Financial Education Summit, our TSE Performing Arts Center, was almost to full capacity as high school juniors and seniors showcased their financial literacy presentations. It was a great opportunity to talk to them about TSE's commitment to affordability for families. So thank you, Chair Garza, for also participating in this event. And that's important, the financial literacy. We always tell the kids, "It's about accumulating wealth and not debt," and show them how to make good financial decisions. Now, this past Sunday, we also held another community event, Play Day at the Sioux. This annual event is hosted by our teacher education program to promote early childhood education in the community. Our students designed a variety of interactive learning stations for children to enjoy as they stroll through the Sioux grounds. Thank you to Program Coordinator Diana Cortés Castro for organizing another wonderful event. And since we last met, the Student Services Division hosted a number of events designed to engage our student. And we had the Student Leadership Academy Workshop, as well as intramural volleyball, dodgeball, and flag football. So thank you to Student Life Team for all you do to enhance the student experience. And now it is time for our monthly video highlighting the activities that have occurred since we last met. So can you please roll the video?
Our story is a success story. Brownsville is not just growing, we are transforming. The future of Brownsville is now.
And we, at Texas Southmost College, are proud to stand with the incredible community of Brownsville. Here's to a bright future together. One student, one family, and one success story at a time.
So in closing, once again, thank you to the Board of Trustees for your unwavering support and commitment toward the college and to the communities we serve. Without you making these courageous decisions, every board meeting, it's extremely difficult to move our college forward. And to all the faculty and staff, thank you for helping our students, you know, help our students complete this spring semester scorpion-strong. So thank you. This concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Presentation from Workforce Solutions. Mr. Raul Vella, tell us how much money you're gonna give us. No pressure.
I wanna, before the clock starts ticking, I wanna just say something. It gives me personally a warm feeling to be here. And I was looking at the video, and it occurred to me that I have a, I proudly display in my office a plaque, which is a distinguished alumnus plaque, that was, my father was given from this institution. My father was a guy named Filimon Vella. He married a woman named Blanca, who was the city's first female mayor. They both passed, but they went to their graves very conscientious of how important this entity was to them and their academic endeavors, and all that they accomplished moving forward. Same for me. I was thinking about my academic journey, and I wouldn't have gone where I did if it not been for this institution as well. So it gives me a great deal of pleasure to be here representing workforce, but I needed to say that. And the second thing, before the clock starts ticking, is that my mother was one of nine children, and her, one of her sisters married that guy right there. So you all know him as Mr. Peña, but he's affectionately my tío Ruin. So I wanna make sure that you all know that. I am here, thank you, Madam Chair, trustees, for this opportunity. I am here to give you a very condensed version. I'm gonna fly through this, so that if there's an opportunity to ask questions, you can. And I wanna ask for an invitation back, because there are many other things that we can talk about that are relevant to the work that we collectively do here. In workforce, there are two things that individuals need, tangible and intangible tools. And my purpose today is to give you some intangible tools, hoping that you feel are useful for the important work that you all do. So, behind you, if you can see the screen, that is the mission of Workforce Solutions, Cameron. We are the organization that tends to individuals who need employment, individuals who are employed who need to be upskilled, and of course, for industry, to make sure that they're given, or they have access to the individuals they need for their, for the individual operations. Okay, next, this slide, there are 28 workforce boards across the state of Texas. The one at the very southern tip is number 24, is Workforce Solutions, Cameron. We work under the auspices and under the umbrella of the Texas Workforce Commission. Next, we have 27 board members on our board. Let me say that again, there are 27 board members. You should be clapping for that. Come on.
It's hard working with seven.
So I wanna point this out and give you this. Our chief elected officials by law, this board is appointed by the county judge and the mayor of the largest city. So you see the picture of Judge Trevino and Mayor Cowan in a good cross-section. I want you to know that TSE is very capably represented by Dr. Stella Garcia on our board. And I tell you, when I have something like a strategic plan, or a bylaws, or something like that for review, not everybody will respond, but I can guarantee you that she will respond meticulously. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate your efforts on our behalf, Dr. Garcia. So thank you.
Even if it's two o'clock in the morning.
Yes, ma'am. Agreed. I have experienced that. Next, please. I introduce you to the Workforce Continuum. If you'll notice, the blue piece of this, this image here, I've scratched out the K, because what we're involved in, we have around a $50 million budget that's given, that's allocated from the Department of Labor. But of that $50 million, 60% goes to childcare. Because if there's an impediment to an individual getting work, if they can't afford childcare, that's where we step in. There are 180 childcare centers in Cameron County, and we do whatever we can to make sure that that impediment is set aside, so that individuals can go to work. So it's not K through 12, it's 0 through 12, because we know how important that time between 0 and K is for individuals. Our training partners, like this institution here, any other public or private entity in the county, we make sure and tend to those and develop a strong rapport with them. And then, of course, industry, that's why we're here, to make sure that any individual who goes through one of our training partners, and we facilitate those training dollars, goes straight into a good-paying job. Next, the most important slide I can give you and show to you. This is, if you look at the x-axis, this is median household income. Median household income, because there's different ways to present household income, median is significant, I think, because there's a point in a line where half of the individuals make more and half of the individuals make less. So what you see here is the comparison and the gap between Cameron County household income in yellow since 1950, and Texas in pink, and the United States in blue. So I draw your attention, I wanted to show you this. You know, I grew up in an environment, if you knew my parents', glass is always half-full. And this doesn't seem like a half-full image, but it's a realistic image. And I think we have to look at the things that are challenges for us and meet them head-on. So the issue is not when the Brookings Institute and the government release data every year that shows that we, once again, amongst the MSAs around... that shows that we, once again, amongst the MSAs around the country or amongst the most impoverished, it's that we've sustained it for so long. So right here, the numbers that you see in the middle there, the average is 35%. We just took random numbers. The gap between our household income and the reason household income is so important, most global economists, respected rational economists believe that that's the most important metric that we can use that indicates the health and the well-being of a region or a state or a country. So we live in this area, I believe, as you all do, that we live in one of the wealthiest regions in the entire country, but this is one of the biggest challenges that we face that we can continue to face. Next. This is animated. Now, kudos to, forgive me, Graciela Salazar, Director of Communications, who's done tremendous job with these images. I want to, this, if you look at the Y axes, the government categorizes household income in those categories there. So I'm going to animate this. There's good news, there's good indicators, and I want to show them to you. In 2011, I want you to take a look at the black bar, which is third from the top. You'll notice that the X axes, the number of individuals or households that earn less than $10,000 is 14.2%, around there somewhere. Look what happens between 2011 and 2023. Go ahead. Look at the black bar. That went from 14 down to six and a half. Now draw your attention to the bottom one, individuals in Cameron County who earn more than $200,000 in household income. If you can play it again, just look at the purple and the one above that as well. Look at those two bars at the very bottom. Less than 2% and in 12 years, that number has doubled. Those are excellent indicators of some good things that are going on here. Next. I'm happy to bring this back if you'd like. Another way to look at it, this is the same thing, but if you look at the black piece of the pie on the top, there are less than $10,000, you can see that that number in 2023 for Cameron County was 7.1%. By contrast, Texas is at, if you click on the Texas, there you go, is about 2% and less, or two points less. The United States is a little bit less than that. So we have, have these lag measures, there's these gaps, but there appears to be evidence that we're closing those gaps in a very significant way. Okay, next. Oh my goodness. Sorry about that. Here's, all indicators point to this as one of the reasons, not the only reason, that we have lagged behind in terms of household income. These are, the Brookings Institute and the Census Bureau identify companies by tiers, as you all know. Tier one companies, or there's examples of them on the right there. Tier two, there's examples there, and tier three are on the bottom. We have, for generations, had the absence of those tier one and tier two companies that pay higher wages and give higher, higher paying jobs and opportunities for the people that live here. So if there's one thing that those, our Economic Development Council partners ought to be involved in, it's getting those tier one and those tier two companies. We were an agricultural-based society for many, many years and it yielded lower paying wages. And then, you know, kind of shifted to light manufacturing. We had a, remember the Hager and the, it was apparel period there, fruit of the loom. But when the Maquilas industry came, they shifted to Matamoros, right? So if we could work together towards that, to get those tier one and tier two companies, it can be transformative. And for the first time, we actually see those companies here at the port. And then finally, the star of the show, next please, is the labor market information. Go ahead and pass that one up. That's, you know, the educational attainment levels. Okay, so this, this one right here, there are, out of the 450,000 people that live in our county, much, many of who live in the taxing district for TSC, there are 193,000 individuals that are gainfully employed in Cameron County. And of those, there are 850 different occupations. Of those 850 occupations, the biggest piece of the pie in 2023 are individuals who are employed in healthcare and social assistance. We know that. That's been like that for generations and it doesn't look like that trend's going to end. And you can see the second one is educational services. The third and the fifth are really retail. And I want to say just a word about retail. Retail is important because it enriches our lives. We want more restaurants. I just had a conversation with my friends today. Where are we going to go eat tonight? We've already hit all the restaurants. Where are we going to go? Do we need to go to another city? Actually, it's very robust here right now. Stores, we want more places to shop, but we have to be clear-eyed about the yield in terms of household income that the retail environment provides for individuals. So often, not always, but often, those salaries for people that work at those places are lower wages. So do we want a more robust retail environment? Absolutely. But those tier one and tier two companies are the ones that really elevate. So the retail environment, those two slides, if you put them together, the third and the fifth one, the green one and the red one, really it's about 20% going to the retail trade. Next, and I think we're done here. The three outputs from prolific workforce, we reduce poverty, we enhance industry, we enrich lives. And finally, are we done? Okay.
You did good.
Did I make it? That was five minutes? I was freaking out over the five minutes. I'm happy to answer any questions. If not, please invite me back. I'm happy to.
I'm going to change my statement, how much money you're going to give us. No, no, you don't give us money. You give your community members money to enhance their lives.
We try very hard. We try very hard.
You know, we train them, but unless you help them get into the school, then we can't do it. So you're needed.
Thank you. Thank you for the observation. I do have to give kudos to the 140 people on our staff who are dedicated professionals every single day that make all the things that we do possible. So any questions, I'm happy to answer to the trustees.
No questions?
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And you're welcome to come back. Item number seven, consideration and possible action on approval of the minutes of the following meetings. Regular meeting, March 27, 2025. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the minutes as posted. A second.
A motion to approve the meetings of March 27, 2025 as presented. All those in favor? Discussion? I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
You went ahead of me, no discussion. Finance Committee, Ms. Delia Sines.
Yes, ma'am. The Finance Committee met on Monday, April 7, 2025. Present were Chair Garza, Secretary Lopez Harris, President Rodriguez, myself, members of the TSC administration and College Legal Counsel. The committee discussed the following items. Consideration and possible action on approval of VX rail network technology replacement equipment purchase. I call on Mr. Luis Villarreal.
Thank you, Ms. Sines, Board of Trustees, Dr. Rodriguez, and of course, Thieu Ruben. Before you, you have one item, which is really just the replacement and upgrade of equipment that we currently have in our data center here at Texas Southmost. As you may recall, we had a security event back in December through January and one of the major systems that was compromised was our VX rail storage area array, a network of servers where we maintain all of our virtual servers, virtual machines, using VMware. VMware has been purchased by, from Dell by a company called Broadcom and the licensing has gone through the roof. VX rail itself has become an exorbitant thing to replace. So we worked with Dell to consider, to come up with a comparable solution to replace and upgrade our VX rail, which has become end-of-life, and that is what is before you today. We are going to replace it with another set of Power Edge servers from Dell. And it is about half the cost of what it would take to upgrade the VX rail to the next version of VX rail. And so I feel very good about that for, because we're saving money, but also because we have the project to move Colleague into the cloud, into the SaaS version of Colleague. We don't have as much need a year from now to do VMware, which actually resides on the VX rail. So once we're on the Power Edge servers, we can look at maybe a different solution than VMware to house our virtual machines. I know that's a little technical, but at the end of the day, we're taking an end-of-life system and replacing it with another set of servers to replicate that system. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
No questions? I move to approve the purchase of VX rail network technology replacement equipment in the amount of 151,704 from Dell Technologies through DIR contract and authorize President Rodriguez to execute the purchase order contract as presented.
Motion by Ms. Delia Sines.
A second.
Second by Dr. Harris. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries?
Thank you.
8B, consideration and possible action on passing a resolution to designate officer to calculate the no new revenue and no voter approval tax rate for tax year 2026. I call on Mr. Carlos Pecero.
Thank you, Ms. Sines. Madam Chair, Members of the Board, President Rodriguez, we have before you consideration and possible action to designate a tax officer. The Property Tax Reform Act in Texas stipulates that we designate an officer to calculate and certify the proposed tax rates. And those are coming up in the budget year that we're looking at. The resolution accompanying this agenda item will meet the act's requirements and it'll allow us to remain in compliance with these regulations. If there are any questions, I'd like to try and answer those. Legal Department has reviewed the resolution and given it the okay.
Need a motion in a second, then we can discuss.
I move to approve resolution to designate officer to calculate the no new revenue and/or voter approval tax rate for tax year 2026.
A motion?
Second.
Second by Dr. Harris. Discussion? No discussion? Okay. Motion carries?
8C.
Excuse me, did I take a vote? No, I didn't. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries?
I'm not sure if Ruben needs to read the resolution.
No.
There we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just an abundance of caution.
Monthly financial statement report for the month ended February 2025. Mr. Pecero?
Thank you, Ms. Sines. Madam Chair, Members of the Board, President Rodriguez, I have for you the monthly financial statements for the month of February. We have a presentation where I'll concentrate, the numbers I'm reading off in subtotals, which is the February column that you see here. As we have before, we're presenting three fund types where we'll present revenue and expenditures. So I'll begin with the first, where we have revenue for the general fund and we have that subtotal here, 7.2 million. We move on to the expenditures for general fund. We have two subtotals for salaries and wages and for benefits, and those amounts are 1.6 million and 477,000. On the next slide is where the MNO category begins and it concludes on the following slide. And we can see the subtotal here, just 2.1 million. We're still in general fund and we have subtotals for travel and general institutional. And those are 15,000 and 194,000 respectively. This is the last slide for general fund and total expenditures on here are almost 4.8 million for the month of February. So that's revenue and expenditures for general fund. We have a recap for the budget amendment category, which we can see here. And now we have the auxiliary fund, which is the first slide with revenue on it. And for the month of February, we have 115,000. Moving on to expenditures, we have 52,000 for salaries and wages and almost 14,000 for benefits. Next is the MNO category, which concludes here with a subtotal of 28,000. Last slide for the auxiliary fund and on note, total expenditures of 315,000. That's revenue and expenditures for auxiliary. The last of the three fund types are bonds, our general obligation and revenue bond funds. I have 1 million in revenue in the month of revenue in the month of February and expenditures, we have 5.3 million, which on note, we did have our debt service principal and interest payments which show up there. So that's revenue and expenditures for all three fund types. If there's any questions, I'd like to try and answer those.
Any questions?
This is just for information, right?
For information.
Yes. This item is for information only, no action is required.
Let me say that Mr. Herrera would be very proud to have you in charge.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes.
8D, second quarter investment report for fiscal year 2025. Mr. Pecero?
Thank you, Ms. Sines. Madam Chair, Members of the Board, President Rodriguez, we have for you the investment report for the second quarter. That ends on February 2025. We have a table that recaps the activity here up at the top of the report. And I like to highlight the amount that's invested, which is 112 million, and the amount of revenue, interest revenue generated for that quarter is 1.1 million. The remainder of the report is similar to what we have seen before. It has on the left-hand column, the type of product that's being invested, and then we have comparative info with balances, yields, and interest revenue. And the remainder of the report is in that format. We can see that we do present it and it is signed by the investment officer. This report in this specific format is required by the Texas Public Fund Investment Act and this report meets those requirements as presented. If there's any questions, I'd like to try and answer those.
This item is for information only, no action is required. 8E, report on the grants awarded to Texas Southmost College for the month of March. Mr. Pecero?
Thank you, Ms. Sines. We have for you a recap for the month of March. Additional funds that were awarded to the college during this month, $43,000 from the Texas High Education Board, the Carl Perkins Program. And the remainder of the report gives a recap of the total awards awarded to the college during the fiscal year. And we can see that subtotal here at the bottom, 3.1 million. If there are any questions, I'd like to try and answer those.
No questions. This item is for information only, no action is required, and this concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sines. Let me go back to the, to the motion with the meetings. Let me redo that one. Consideration and possible action on approval of the minutes of the following meeting. And I'll entertain a motion.
I move to accept the minutes as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Second by Mr. Camarillo. Okay, now discussion. Did anybody see anything with the minutes that you did not agree with? No? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries? Are we clear now? Thank you. Thank you. No. Academic Committee, Mr. Edgar Garcia?
Good afternoon, everybody. The Academic Committee met on Monday, April 7, 2025. Present were Trustee Aldrete, President Rodriguez, members of the TSC administration and College Legal Counsel. The committee discussed the following items. 9A, consideration and possible action on approval to purchase additional hours of online tutoring services for fiscal year 2024-2025. I call on Mr. Luis Villarreal, Vice President of Information Technology, Mr. Oscar Hernandez, Associate Vice President of Institutional Effectiveness and Educational Technologies to present the item.
It's a mouthful. Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Board of Trustees, Madam Chair, Dr. Rodriguez, and again, Thieu Ruben. I would like to, if with your permission, allow Mr. Hernandez to present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Villarreal. Madam Chair, Members of the Board, President Rodriguez, good afternoon. Before you, you have a staff recommendation to purchase additional online tutoring service hours. Where this year, normally we plan for about 7,000 hours, but due to the increase in dual enrollment and increase in just overall enrollment, we've seen an increase in usage of our online tutoring services. Mainly, if you look at our top 10 courses in your packet, mainly through our English and our math courses, which is great to see that our students are going out there and really using the services to their benefit. So this request is to purchase an additional 2,000 hours, where it's projected to run out of the 7,000 hours probably by the end of this month. This 2,000 will get us hopefully to the end of August.
Motion.
I move to approve the purchase of 2,000 additional online tutoring service hours with Brainfuse LLC in the amount of $46,000, and authorize President Rodriguez to execute the contract as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Garcia.
Second.
Second by Dr. Harris. Discussion.
Will we be purchasing more hours in August then?
With the new year, it'll probably go into the budget, we're going to request an additional 9,000 hours that are part of the contract. So it'll be 7,000 percent additional, 2,000, and we're currently working with Brainfuse to restructure the contract.
I'm always amazed, because I always say, when students are trying to come into TSC, if they come in, we'll work with them, and we make them succeed, and I think this is a good part of it, so I'm happy.
I do have a question. Have we had positive feedback from the students in regards to Brainfuse and how effective this is for them?
It has, sir. For the most part, if you look at the hours that they're using it for, it's mainly for their writing essays. So they actually, they have live sessions where they go and actually talk to a tutor online, and they also submit their essays for a tutor to review it within 24 hours and then send back. And one thing that I always stress is that even though this is online tutoring services, it's actually a human on the other side. It's not a machine. It's actually a human reviewing the essays and actually having those conversations with the students.
Renice, I have.
One question, I'm sorry. Is the Writing Lab the in-person or from the Brainfuse, which is the online?
It's both.
It's both?
It's both. Actually, we also use our own tutors here on campus to help our online students as well.
Thank you.
More questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
All right. Nine B, consideration and possible action on an agreement between Texas Southmost College and Cameron County through its county judge for use of the county airport. Call on Mr. Richard Mesquias.
Mr. Garcia, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Rodriguez, the purpose of the agreement is to allow the police academy to provide safety driving training and exercise at the county airport for a fee of $100. This is a renewal we'll do every year. We use the airport to do the driving test there.
I move to approve the agreement between Texas Southmost College and Cameron County through its county judge for use of the county airport and authorize President Rodriguez to execute the agreement as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Garcia.
A second.
Second by Dr. Harris. Discussion. I think at some point we said when we bought the new car for the police academy that you were going to take us to the airport and allow us to.
When they arrive.
Well.
They haven't arrived, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, just for the record, that's what we're going to do.
I'll make sure the president knows, so he can identify everybody.
Thank you, sir. Any more discussion?
How many days will we be using the airport?
So we'll use it for two days. It just depends on the class size. If it's a small class size, which is one day, but we have a very large class size this time, so it'll be a full two days.
I am amazed today, I saw, we went by the police academy, there's lots of students.
Thirty-one cadets.
Lots of cadets. How many?
Thirty-one cadets.
Yay, very good.
How many women?
There are six women.
It's impressive. It was impressive today. Thank you. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
All right. Nine C, consideration and possible action on agreement for federal adult education and family literacy act program instructional services between Texas Southmost College and Brownsville Independent School District. I call on Mr. Richard Mesquias.
Thank you, sir. This is a renewal also that we've done again with the BISD organization. Will provide a subaward to us in the amount of 60,000. These funds will be used to offer 28 adult education students certification and job skills training into a career pathway while co-enrolled in the AEL, high school equivalency course. The subaward will be instructional supplies scholarships for the WTC program.
All right. I move to approve the agreement for federal adult education and family literacy act program instructional services between Texas Southmost College and Brownsville Independent School District, and authorize President Rodriguez to execute the agreement as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Garcia.
Second.
Second by Dr. Harris. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. That's it?
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Thank you for doing this for the academic committee. Facilities Committee, Mr. Camarillo.
The Facilities Committee met on Monday, April 7th, 2025. Present were Madam Chair Garza, trustee Garcia, President Rodriguez, myself, members of the Texas TSC administration and college legal council. The committee discussed the following items. Ten A, consideration and possible action on award RFP 25-04 for south building modular air handler replacement. Call on Dr. Garcia.
Thank you, trustee Camarillo. Madam Chair, members of the board, President Rodriguez, with your permission, I ask Mr. Ronnie Rubliss and Mr. Aralo Moscuro to present this item.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Camarillo, Madam Chair, board members, and Dr. President Rodriguez. What you have before you is a request for a purchase of an air handler in South B. What you have, what you see on the screen is basically on the left, the unit that has outlived its life and basically died. So we were, had to pull it out, and that just occurred, and go out for new equipment. The one on the right you see is a much smaller unit, and that is what has been proposed to replace what has been removed. On the evaluation was Mr. George Nahuasa, Mr. Moscuro, and Mr. Orlando Ruiz. You have two respondents, one Gulf Mechanical, the second was Texas Chiller Systems. Here you have the RFP evaluation criteria, the pricing, the respondents qualifications, their ability to provide the goods and services, their performance on comparable projects historically, respondents' ability to comply and delivery schedule, their service support policy and customer, the impact of the ability of the college to comply with the rules and laws if they're historically underutilized business, which is a hub, principal place of business, corporate office in the state of Texas, and or number of employees in the state, any other relevant factors provided to respond to the request containment, and finally, ability to provide timely professional service for having corporate or branch offices within Texas Southmost College District or surrounding areas. The expense will be coming from the budget fiscal year 24-25. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Camarillo.
Are there any questions?
Motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I move to award the RFP 25-04 for the south building modular air handler replacement to Gulf Mechanical Solutions LLC in the amount of 72,504 plus 5% contingency to cover unforeseen events, and authorize President Rodriguez to execute the contract as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Camarillo.
Second.
Second by Mr. Garcia. Discussion. No? Other than that, it was dead, we need a new one?
I think Mr. Moscuro had said it was, what, 30, 40 years old?
It's a, good evening, ma'am chair, President Rodriguez. That unit was installed back in 1988, so it was 37 years of life, something like that.
Wow.
Yeah. And it covers a large portion of South Building, so we're talking about 10 classrooms.
I have a question. So the 5% contingency on, in addition to the 72,000 to cover unforeseen events, what exactly can that cover?
It's just for protection, but as we are calculating this project, everything is covered on the original quote.
Okay.
Basically, you know, because we've basically already taken the old equipment out, they look at potential problems that may come up, you know, so it's just a contingency if something happens, we have that 5% of the total to be able to offset that so that we don't have to come back and say, hey, it exceeded, or it was this, or it was that. That's the purpose of it.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
Best in case.
Motion, sir?
Yes.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Next item, 10 B, facilities update. Dr. Garcia.
Thank you, trustee Camarillo. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Rodriguez, again with your permission, ask Mr. Rubliss, Mr. Moscuro, and Mr. George Nahuasa to present the item.
Mr. Camarillo, Madam Chair, board members, and President Rodriguez, what we're about to present is information that has occurred since the last meeting, or just some updates. First one is dedicated to the plants and the rec center. Final testing is in progress. They had a meeting today, as a matter of fact, making sure that the Siemens control system is, we can see it, talk to it, and make sure that we can adjust whatever's necessary if something happens. The network drop occurred Monday, Tuesday, at the childcare center, so that now is live. And then the punch list, those were two of the, or two of the last items, so we'll be conducting the final punch list once we are secure enough that everything is functioning properly. Thermal plant cooling tower installation, everything is still moving along as it should be. They're in the final, the final wells, or the inspection of the wells has been completed. There was one cross member that needed to be reattached. They've taken care of it, and so the final, final will occur here in the next probably 30 days, around that timeframe. So once that's set, we'll actually have, they'll start to place both towers in the locations. And we have a couple of pictures. Again, the two units on the left are the ones that are going to be replaced. On the right, you see the vacant hole where they're going to be placed. So we're hoping that those occur pretty quick, once all the wells are inspected, approved, engineering says they're good, we can move forward. Pipe fitting lab, all, electrical has been done, the RFP is still out. It's still being advertised, so hopefully we'll get it closed and get a bidder. Once that takes place, we'll look at it and make sure we can get it put in and have that area completed. National Fitness Campus, I mean, I'm sorry, National Fitness Campaign Fitness Court. This is really exciting because, you know, I've seen some of the pictures before, and now you'll see the after. Began on March, installation began March 31st. That's the actual apparatus of what is going to happen. It was, installation completed by the date, April 11th. Projected ribbon cutting is May the 6th. That's the final picture of, that's the actual apparatus that's out there now. So it's very, I mean, pops, you can see it. Here's another picture of it, and this is the opposite side of some of the apparatus that's there. You'll see the boxes, there's other type, those types of exercise apparatus on that side as well. So it's, that's why I say it's very exciting.
I have a question. Are the students using it already, or is it off limits right now?
They're not using it at this point, but if, should somebody go out there, they're more than welcome to use the apparatus.
We should do the ribbon cutting first, no?
Yes, and so.
We want it nice and clean when we do that ribbon cutting.
And we're working with the National Fitness Campaign. We're having meetings with them, and Dr. Ponce has identified, I think, I think he is identifying a couple of students that will actually learn how to utilize some of the stations, and then they'll do a demo the day of the ribbon cutting. So there's a program associated. It's a self-paced program. You use an app, you scan it, it'll give you how to use the apparatus, whether it's jumping on a, the step, you know, you've seen those, or pull-ups, or what have you. It's all kind of built on your own resistance, and then the other half, the other side, the where you saw just the open space, that's called the studio, that's for group, like yoga, zumba, anyone who wants to come use it and do group activity, that's kind of, and we'll promote it that way. And so we're learning the best way to use it, and then that way during the, on the May 6th ribbon cutting with all the demos, and then we'll start promoting it for everyone to use, students as well as community members.
You know, we have a very diversified board. We also have dogs that like to exercise. It wouldn't be me, but I would love to go watch him do it.
I do have a question. Will there be a charge for this application for them to learn how to use their anything?
In terms of hours that students or the public, is it just going to be open whenever you just want to go?
Sun up to sundown, and they haven't announced it, but, and it was in a part of the presentation, but they, the guys behind me, I've been talking to PUB to get some of the, kind of the security lighting, so there's going to be additional lighting in that space, so it'll be lit, but in essence, we're pretty, the promotion will be sun up to sundown. Anyone can use it, and so we'll promote it that way. 14 and older, I think, is the group, and this is sponsored by, besides the National Fitness Campaign, Blue Cross and Blue Shield. And so they'll be promoting it within the network, and UT Health has some program that they're going to be using as well and promoting it and what have you. So we'll be pushing out in social media and encouraging anyone that wants to, and it's part of the Lance to Park program, right? So we want the community to be able to use that, that space.
Welcome. We did this just for you two.
Workout clothes.
Exactly. Exactly. You can jump on that box like you like to do.
Okay.
Next is the hydraulic line, I'm sorry. Next is the hydraulic line replacement project. Half an associate is still completing the drawings on there. Hopefully, we'll get them very soon so that we can put together the RFP so we can go out for bid. We still see survey groups out there making sure that where they're saying the lines are, that they are actually there so that we don't disrupt an HVAC line or something else, something else that might be there. So they're still evaluating and confirming lines. The PUB water tower demolition is, they're still looking at the May 19th timeframe. I have a meeting scheduled with them next week, I believe, so that we can finalize or get some further information to make sure that that date is still good. Still trying to push them up a little bit further so that when our semester ends, they can start as soon as possible so that it doesn't interfere with summer one. This is another project that we are, have basically 99% complete. It was the renovation of the amphitheater. Here you'll see that we've put in plumbing fixtures, electrical, new electrical poles, we pressure washed everything, put in the privacy fence that was restained, that was for the garbage containers. Doors, new doors have been installed or rehabbed, painted the bathrooms, the internal and external walls, and a new roof was installed. Here you'll see on the left, a picture of just the structure before anything was done. Doesn't have a roof, you can see through the door where everything that was in there, we took out. Right, that's the bathrooms. On the right, you'll see the finished product for the exception of the added concrete that is ADA compliant. So when, at this juncture, we're pretty close to being completed, the restrooms have been renovated, the roof was on, had new electrical, new lights, so it looked very good. In the back foreground, you can see the actual amphitheater. We added the railings in the middle and have painted the structure. Here you'll see the inside of that bathroom that we were talking about on the left. On the right, that's the finished product, just needs to be cleaned. This is below, underneath the stage, this was on the left when we started to rehab the whole space down there, and on the right is that same wall with the lights on, we put a countertop in there. So it's, now you can see, here's the railings that you can see and the lights. So, it's, it's, now you can see, here's the, the railings that you can see and the lights. In this picture, there's no lights, but now there is, and they're illuminated, all electrical, all lights are illuminated now.
Lights, where, where are the lights? On the steps?
Oh, in the middle, yes.
Uh huh, okay.
And that's been completed now. Here you see on the left, where we just, we cleaned the space, and it was just dirt below. Came in and put in artificial turf in the middle, and then the picture on the right shows what it looks like. They're, they're still completing that install, because we had a walkthrough and identified some areas that still needed some, some touch-up or some more securing, so they're doing that to make sure that it doesn't come up and it's safe.
Artificial turf?
Yes, ma'am. Here you'll see a picture of the lights that are behind the first curve, or the, they're, they're illuminated, but, I mean, you just see the brightness. This is at night.
Wow, that looks good.
Yes, it's beautiful. You can see, those are just those lights. Here's a, just a close-up, or, you know, just trying to identify, give, give the, the picture of what it looks like at night. This picture here is the light poles that were installed. There's two light poles with four lights on each, or two lights on each, and it illuminates now the whole space. So, before, you'll see that's what it looked like without, without lights, or the lights off. Then you see, this is with the lights on. There's a picture of the lights that were added, and that illuminates that whole space. And that is the, all of amphitheater.
That's it? Let me, let me tell you, my hat's off to you. You know, I look, I look at, at all of you, including Dr. Garcia, and, and it's worth mentioning that Dr. Garcia just, I don't know how she does it, because it is true, at 2:00 in the morning, she answers your calls. But, and, but I look at all of you, and what a team, you know? You move projects forward, no one complains. You, when we all need to pull together, you see everybody doing what you need, what needs to be done to accomplish a task, and I thank you for that. Very good.
And, and I publicly have to thank our staff, because it is, we ask them, and they're like, okay, what are we going to do? How, you know, they start thinking, we all, you know, get together. But the staff members, the gentlemen that are on the floor doing the job, those are the ones that, I wish I could bring them up and, and, you know-
And why don't you? Next board meeting, make it a point to bring-
Yeah. Because they're, they- They really do miracles.
George, thank you for all you do. Thank you for all you do, and Ms. Moscuro, thank you too.
I have a question. What type of activities will be held there, Dr. Rodriguez, like at the amphitheater?
Amphitheater, I mean, we're really going to expand the offerings that we do with our music programs. We got choirs, there's activities in the arts that we want to do, hold events. So, I've asked, Dr. Alves, is he here? I know we've been exploring some of the possibilities on, on what we're trying to do, so we're really going to have a lot of more activities there. Will there be consideration of making it available to the public rental and all that? Absolutely. That'll be a good, definitely a good place to maybe make some revenue.
Yes.
We're going to promote it, and a part of it is with the, with the help of all our staff and team. Kind of kudos also to our vendors, because that energy that our staff has really is contagious. We look at our vendors, how they come in, and they work hand in hand with, with our staff, and, you know, such as, you know, thanking Half and Associates, and Pritchard, and Gulf Mechanical, and all that support our project, but also our gala. They're very supportive, you can see that the heart's on the right place in helping our community move forward. And yes, we're going to reach out to the school districts, to the city, to the county, any organizations that want to use their facility. As we like to say, this is your community college. And once it's all set and ready, we can start promoting it and renting it as well.
A little bit of history. The amphitheater belonged to the city. Am I correct?
It was a-
It was a partnership. That's when I came on the board. It was sort of-
Work in progress.
It's a work in progress, yeah.
Okay, but now we totally own it?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. Well, we look like it, we're working on it so diligently and making it look so beautiful for the public. We should own it.
Yes, I think we should.
But in time.
In due time, in due time.
Thank you.
Yes.
This item is for information only, no action is required.
Thank you, Ms. Camarillo.
Student Services, Dr. Harris, your turn.
Student Services Committee met on Monday, April 7th, 2025. Present were Chair Garza, trustee Garcia, President Rodriguez, myself, members of the TSC administration, and college legal counsel. The committee discussed the following item. Consideration and possible action and award RFP 25-08 for baseball field renovation. I will call on Dr. David Plummer and Dr. Armando Ponse to present the item.
Dr. Lopez Harris, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, President Rodriguez. Exciting, I know there's always a lot of talk about baseball, and as we continue to explore where that's going and what we can do going forward, working with Dr. Rodriguez and, and the board. This is a great first step, and I really do appreciate the board, you know, budgeting funds for the baseball field so that we can start some renovation. It's going to take a while, but this is the first step, and so with your permission, I'd like to turn over to Dr. Ponse to tell you what we're going to do first with the RFP.
Good evening, Dr. Lopez Harris, Madam Chair, board trustees, Dr. Rodriguez. Here before you would bring an RFP for the renovation of the baseball field. This is, this renovation is actually going to be the outfield and the infield, the actual playing field, and what they call the bullpen area where the pitchers warm up, once a game has, has started. The RFP went out in, in February, and we, we did have two companies that did submit proposals that we both met with. Refortunate, they're both very credible, with very good resumes and a good body of work. They both presented good presentations, and of course, the scope of work is, is based on to make sure they meet the requirements of the NJC AA Division 1 field. So, here's what is the existing, is, is the existing field. As you see, that grass is not the suitable playing, playing grass. So, essentially, the RFP is to gut the field from the entire field, replace it with a brand-new infield, and, and then grow out the outfield. Since we do have some time, the, the more economic choice would be to actually grow it out and, and get some new grass in, in the outfield. On the committee, we're Mr. Cano, Mr. Inohosa, myself, and Mr. Robles. And this, this is the score tabulations that were, that were presented. We have, again, Texas MultiCam out of Kerrville, and we have Ryan Sanders Sports Services out of Ronrock, Texas. Both are sports fields companies, this is what, this is what they do. And again, the criteria that was, that was used is the same one that Mr. Robles read. I don't want to repeat, is the same valuation criteria in regards to qualifications, right? Which, which the, the committee reviewed as did the purchasing department. And this expense will be coming from the budget for, for this coming fiscal year that we, we had budgeted through annual commitments. And the, the company that the committee had selected was Ryan Sanders Sports Services in the amount of $105,250. This company actually is owned by some legend, Nolan Ryan, is a part of one of the Astros now. And actually, part of the proceeds go to his foundation, that the charitable foundation that, that he has. And their, their, their bid came in lower, from discussing with the committee and just some research, they actually produce like some of the infield dirt, they have their own products. So, I think that allowed them possibly to come in a little bit lower than Texas MultiCam, who we've worked with in the past. But they, they've done everything from collegiate fields to major league parks. I'll put any questions?
Thank you. I move to award RFP 25-08 for baseball field renovation to Ryan Sanders Sports Services in the amount of $105,250 plus 5% contingency to cover unforeseen events and authorize President Rodriguez to execute the contract as presented.
I have a motion by Dr. Harris.
My second.
Second by Mr. Garcia. Discussion.
Madam Chair. Dr. Ponse, how long will it take for the field to be playable?
Anywhere from seven to eight months. So, we're looking at, depending on when we start, really by next, by next May, we should be ready to go.
And once that field is set, to maintain the field, how's that going to work?
So, they actually have a maintenance plan that we can actually also purchase. Also, there's training that we can send our own, our own maintenance personnel. There's a specific lawnmower that we, that we would have to use, again, specific dirt treatments. It's a process that I know Mr. Robles is familiar with, as am I. So, those are services that we would partially probably do ourselves and also partially lease out.
Last question, you, you mentioned the, Mr. Ryan's foundation. Is that an organization we might be able to seek funding if the board approves and moves forward on a baseball program?
That's something I could definitely look into, for sure. And they do, they do also have, they do lease equipment to maintain the field, so that's something that we also looked at as well.
Thank you.
And then it might come back to a student of ours, we don't, we never know.
Absolutely.
Any more questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Policies Committee, Ms. Science.
The Policy Committee met on Monday, April 7th, 2025. Present were Chair Garza, trustee Aldeite, President Rodriguez, myself, members of the TSC administration, board, and college legal counsel. The committee discussed the following. Consideration and possible action to approve the revisions to the following local policies. BBB, BBE, DBD, DC, DCA, DEA, DEAB, DEC, DGBA, and GD. I call on Frank Perez, Board Legal Counsel, to present this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board of Trustees, and President Rodriguez. You have before you local policies BBB, BBE, BD, D, DC, DCA, DEA, DEAB, DEC, DGBA, and GD for consideration and possible action. Let me start with BBB. It deals with board members' elections and updating the election dates. All they did was delete a reference to the year 2024, since it's passed, and they included the year 2042. It's a real simple, we, we have it staggered elections. BBE, Board Member's Authority. There's three issues that have to be discussed, I mean, presented. They added a limitation to board authority when a board member is requesting records while not acting in the member's official capacity, and you'll see that as an added part. They deleted any reference to the president's other designee to streamline the process, and they replaced the language in section, in the section called Requests for Reports. They changed it from the existing language of the policy to the language now contained in the policy, proposed policy revision. And that was done basically to make it more efficient and quicker to go through, and more definitive. BD, DBD, Employment Requirements and Restrictions, Conflict of Interests. They revised the section, and when I say they, I'm talking about TASB in conjunction with the meeting we had with them, the all-day meeting, that we had Board Counsel, TSC Counsel, Administration staff, and representatives from TASB. They revised a section on public office to make the notification requirements similar to when a TSC employee seeks employment outside of TSC. That was to make the policies consistent with each other. DC and DCA basically just moved the tenure provision from DCA to DC. We don't have a tenure, we don't do tenure. Then we have DEA, Compensation and Benefits. There were revisions to the adjunct faculty pay and teaching overload, overload stipends, including salary provisions moved from DJ to DEA. DEAB, Compensation Plan, Wage and Hour Laws. They removed the last three paragraphs of the policy to make it more efficient, and two, they were not needed. DEC, Compensation and Benefits, Leaves of Absences. There's a medical certification paragraph on page two that was revised, and it changed the number of days that, that are required to give employees notice from five to three days, and that was to basically comply with law, because if we didn't move it to three days, we wouldn't have enough time, TSC wouldn't have enough time to, to make timely notice to the employee. And that was discussed in the, in the committee. DGBA, Personnel Management, this is the grievance. And they have something called the AJC that they refer to, that's the Area Joint Council. It's a group of individuals working within or, or with TASB that focus on specific regional issues of interest. And they revised this policy to utilize, to change the language of the policy to use the model language proposed by the AGC. They also, we also added, or the committee added, on page three, inserted the number three for the number of working days that a grievant has to file a corrected complaint if they, after they are notified that the complaint does not meet policy requirements. DG, Community Expression, Use of College Facilities. There was a revision to page six to include item seven. You'll see on page six, in the list of materials that, that shall not be distributed on college district property. That's a pretty much common sense thing that, that was added by the administration that, that we thought was, or the committee thought was appropriate to add. That concludes my report. Do you have any questions?
I need a motion and a second first.
I move to approve the following local policies. BBB, BBE, DBD, DC, DCA, DEA, DEAB, DEC, DGBA, and GD as presented.
A motion by Ms. Science.
My second.
Second by Mr. Garcia. Discussion.
Madam Chair. Mr. Perez, on the, on the policy of no, no tenure for faculty.
No what?
The no tenure-
Yes.
Part in the, in these, in the, in the BBC. Is there any, something in the future to look at doing that? Is there a specific reason why we don't do tenure?
That was done a while back, it's, it's in the policy. I don't recall the reason, but I could go back and, and review the, the policies. I don't remember how that came about.
It's, you should, community colleges usually don't have tenure, because-
You're allowed to.
A lot of actions.
Okay, and so I, you know, that was one, I, so you know, Mr. Vella brought up somebody celebrating 40 years and, as a staff member working at, at Workforce, and you see, we talk about how do you celebrate that? Faculty, they spend a long time here, how would we celebrate, how do we recognize that? And so, looking at it, and whether, again, whether it's the norm of the college campuses or not, or community college campus, you know, something I think, again, trying to keep and retain faculty, especially the very good ones, just something, something to consider. The other item was the comp, comp time, or I believe that's how you would call it, comp time, where staff used, or individuals that would take time, instead of getting paid overtime, they get to take that time off during, you know, during the slow days, or, you know, during vacation periods. So, that's being eliminated, so if they do work overtime, they do get paid.
Yes, they're going to get paid, but that, those, I think you're talking about-
Under D, the D? I'm sorry, under DEA-
AAB?
Yeah, compensatory time, which is comp time, right?
Perhaps administration, if there's somebody here can- Dr. Alves? Alves Pizano?
That is an hourly employee is eligible to earn overtime pay. And the compensatory time was something that was likely in an update that was removed in this, in this addition. We historically have not done that before. And we, it's, it's easier to track and to reward that work with that overtime rate than to do the, the compensatory time.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pizano. Okay, I have a motion and a second, and we're discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. We're done. The board will now convene an executive session as provided by Government Code, Chapter 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and- Chapter 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and 551.089. We're now in executive session.
We are going to go back to eight B and take that item again, consideration and possible action on passing a resolution to designate officer to calculate the no new revenue and/or voter approval tax rate for tax year 2026, 2025, 2025. That was the issue. Okay, 2025.
You go ahead and read.
The State of Texas County of Cameron, Texas Southmost College District Resolution, whereas the Texas Southmost College District authorizes a designated officer or employee to calculate the no new revenue and/or the voter approval tax rate for and whereas section 26.04 C1 of the Texas Tax Code provides that the governing body of the taxing unit will designate a person to also certify the accuracy of the tax rate calculation sheet. Now therefore be it resolved that Texas Southmost College District acting through its governing board hereby requests in accordance with 26.04 C1 of the Texas Tax Code, the interim Vice President of Finance and Administration Carlos Pecero to calculate the no new revenue and/or voter approval tax rate for tax year 2025 in the manner provided for a special taxing unit adopted this 17th day of April, 2025. Now therefore be it resolved that Texas Southmost College District acting through its governing board hereby requests in accordance with 26.04(c)(1) of the Texas Tax Code, the interim Vice President of Finance and Administration Carlos Pecero to calculate the no new revenue and/or voter approval tax rate for tax year 2025 in the manner provided for a special taxing unit adopted this 17th day of April 2025, signed by Adela Gigarza, TSC Board Chair, and Dr. Norma Lopez Harris, TSC Board Secretary. Thank you.
Whose item was that? I need a motion.
It's Finance.
You read Science. Okay. Can you read the motion?
I'm looking for it. I move to approve resolution to designate officer to calculate the no new revenue and/or voter approval tax rate for the tax year 20?
25.
25.
Yes. I have a motion by Ms. Science.
A second.
Second by Dr. Harris. Discussion, there was a typo, that's why we had to redo this. So it's 2025.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Okay, and we're back to the last page. Okay, there was no action taken in executive session. Announcement of next board meetings, regular board meeting May 15th and regular board meeting June 19th. Everybody okay with that? Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Motion.
Second.
By Mr. Camarillo, second by Dr. Harris. I'm not going to ask for discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Good meeting. Thank you all very much for staying.